There was more kids than...
Yeah, it's too funny. Anyway, it was good and kids appreciate, young and old. There were some little toddlers and they had just as much fun and, you know, it's hard because there's not a lot of great hiding places. So you have to come up with creative ways for them to retrieve the candy canes. And so it was good. Another just really great event. And, you know, thank you to you and your husband. You know, you've just put so much life into this village and I personally can't thank you enough and how grateful your community is to you and your husband. So, thank you. That's it for me.
I was watching the little kid. Everybody else went towards the playground. And one little guy stayed in the center of the basketball court. And he turned around and there were candy canes lined all along the fence. And boy, did he have fun.
But did you see the kid at first when he said, because he was young enough to go on the court?
Yeah.
And he goes digging in the leaves and there are all these hanging right at eye level. It was so funny. I wish I'd had a video to get that. Just digging away at the leaves and Greg's like, Amy, go throw something to the leaves. It was great.
All that effort, I mean, that might still get rewarded.
That's right. It was so funny. But the dad was filming and I wish I knew who the dad was and we could get that up on baseball. That would have been the bomb. It was so great.
All right. Thank you. Karen?
Well, I was just going to say thanks to Nikki Malinsky and Tricia Rye for organizing those crafts.
Tricia, I called her Patty.
That's all right. It's Patricia, but she goes by Tricia.
Yeah, but I know she goes by Tricia.
Yeah. It was kind of funny. We were all trying to pick out ideas and then they came up with so many. I finally just said, just give me the shopping list. They really know their stuff. And then a huge thanks to Amy, who you really have to see her at this candy cane hunt. So come next year. She obviously knows how to work with kids.
It's like a girl surgeon.
Oh, well, yeah, but I have a wonderful picture of her doing, I don't know what you were doing, but she was like jumping up in the air on that basketball.
Oh, the 12 Days of Christmas?
Probably. Yeah, she's a really, really good kid.
That was the Lord's Leaping.
It was Lord's Leaping, yeah.
The Giselleing.
Yeah, her dominos.
She's putting her coffee.
So, yeah, that was a lot of fun. Really was fun to see all those kids come together. The wreath decorating contest is going on. The wreaths are due this Friday, this Friday in the office. And I guess they'll be judged, we'll hang them down at the playground on the chain link fence on Saturday and the judging will be done. As mentioned earlier, there's a book talk on December 27th, 6:30. It's Garrett Woodward, who grew up in Rousas Point. And he has a fabulous job now as a journalist, lives in the south. And it's called If You Can't Play, Get Off The Stage. He's quite a character. I think that people will really enjoy hearing him. There's a red mailbox on the front porch of the meeting house and it's for letters to Santa. So people should encourage their children to write a letter to Santa, get a response. We'll be holding the annual Champlain on the Move New Year's Day Walk starting. I actually think what Paul mentioned, I've been thinking about this. I think we will maybe start it at the library because I want it to go on the new fitness trail. So I'll talk to them about having it started there. And someone just suggested the other day to have a monthly family board game night, which I think would be a lot of fun.
Yeah.
So that is something I'm going to look into. And then the other thing I want to tell everyone about is we have a CD called The North Country Christmas. It just came out. It's dedicated to Joy Jubert's son Cody. But these are all local singers, local musicians who recorded Christmas songs. It's a fundraiser. She and her husband Tom were some of the ones that contributed to that stage that we got and they'd like to expand that. So this is a fundraiser. It's available for $15 at the gym. What's that gym called again?
Global Fitness.
Yeah, Global Fitness. And I think some other locations do, but you definitely can get it there. Where is it?
The Heroin Forest.
Okay.
At the Lennies Complex. Lennies Complex in Platteville.
Okay, all right, thank you. So I encourage you to pick it up and support this. People were really good about donating their time. They had to go down to Peru to get it all recorded. Lot of donated time there and it's really good. It's very, very good.
A good one.
Yeah. So I hope everyone goes out and purchases one. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen?
I really don't have much. The, so at the beginning of December, we, the Catholic Daughters in conjunction with the Knights of Columbus and the Champlain Catholic Men's Club hosted the Senior Citizens Christmas Dinner. And we served over 135 seniors.
Wow, that's awesome.
And it was amazing. And it was, it's funny because they start for four and about 20 of three people start coming in. They get a little, you know, a little holiday cheer and they sit and they visit with people that they maybe haven't seen in months. And, yeah, and it was so nice. The place was filled, the food was excellent, the weather was fabulous. So another successful event for the community.
That's great. Thank you for doing that.
It was really a lot of fun. It's not a lot of people that put it on, that get together to work it. It's like anything else. It's same groups of people, but they couldn't be done without the two groups of conjunctions. So, good event.
Very appreciative audience, too.
Oh, my gosh, they're so fun. They were so fun.
It's a fun event to work.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, I bet.
It is.
A holiday cheer, there's enough to... Oops, a little bit. Improve the appetite, that's what it is.
Well, it wasn't to keep warm this year because it was like 40 degrees, but it was actually a good day for seniors to be out and about because last year we had a little bit of a nice storm or something that day. So it was good.
All right, thank you. Heather, report from Kirk Treasure.
Everyone has their Spencer Avenue reports for November, which is our half the year mark. Everything looks good, except there's a couple accounts in the water fund that we were, like parks and labor. There's not much we can do about either one of those at this point.
Yeah. I think it's still fine. It'll still go okay.
Yeah, because the overall, the overall figures, we haven't spent half of the budget.
Right.
Yeah.
Beautiful.
We'll get a little bit more back, but a lot of the, all the breaks and things, that's not, that's all on us.
Well, we knew that was going to happen.
Yeah, hopefully we've discovered the weak spots.
We had eight since Halloween, so.
All right. Anything else want to add on that?
No, unless somebody has questions.
I'm not allowed to, you told me.
All right, we may have to... Karen and I attended the meeting. I guess this will be the time for this. We attended the meeting this afternoon dealing with the youth program, the summer youth program. And the discussion mainly was from a, another community, another village, Village of Rousas Point, that feels that there needs to be some, there should be some changes about money that is, money that is appropriated. Jump in here and correct me if I'm wrong. Money that's appropriated for the program. And what they're proposing in their youth program agreement, the IMA, is that the Village of Rousas Point lowered their contribution to the youth program because they are the ones that maintain just about all of the fields and all of the properties that are used, except for the ones that take place at school and swimming and things. But all the summer activities, the soccer, the baseball, softball, tennis, I think is down there as well.
Yeah.
And what they are proposing is lessening their contribution and which would increase the contribution of the town and the Village of Champlain. I think our bill, the bill was...
Seventy-six, like seventy-six, sixty-seven.
Seventy, I have eighty-five, fifty-six, but that was after you made the changes?
Yeah.
Okay. After it was figured out correctly. Thanks to Anita catching that. So it's seventy-six something?
Seventy-five, seventy-six, sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven, sixty-six.
Seventy-six, sixty-seven, sixty-six. All right, so the proposal, if the board chooses, and I, in thinking about this and listening to what they were presenting, and in thinking about this, I guess, number one, in my mind, this is a program that's aimed directly at the youth, to give them something to do during the summer. It's more than just going and playing soccer. It's developing social skills, it's developing a lot of, you know, physical attributes. It's developing a lot of things. And we, we have, and I don't know the percentages, but we have probably the lowest number of kids participating, you know, between Rousas Point and the town and even with moors, that's only involved in the swimming program. But keeping that in mind, you know, we could probably say no to any increase in our contribution. I don't know that it would threaten the program overall. It would have to increase, if we said no, the town would have to increase its contribution. And it's already, the town already contributes a huge amount towards this youth commission, you know, the program.
What do they contribute? Do you know those figures for each?
They actually pay Linda's salary.
Yeah, they pay Linda.
That's not even...
And it's probably...
In hours.
It's at least twice of what we pay.
And they do, they do all the crafts that are at the town?
And all the paperwork that's involved because all the coaches and all the staff have to be town employees. On the town payroll. Just a quick figure. It looks like if our contribution is 7,600 or 7,700, you're probably talking about about $2,000 more for us.
They suggested that we take half of the sum, say 8,000, it's easier to do the math. Half and then divide it between the town and the Village of Champlain. So it would be two and two, 4,000.
They want to drop their contribution in half?
Because they maintain all the playing fields.
Maintaining all of the playing fields and all, taking care of everything up there.
And they've been, you know, building up the playing fields and the baseball, you know, line fields and...
We have no available space here in the village. And the town really doesn't have much either.
No.
So it's, the program is either going to be in Rousas Point on their playing fields or at the school.
And the school has been saying no because they're busy with their own teams during the seasons.
Yeah, the soccer fields are being used, the baseball, the softball fields are all being used at the school. So it's what it really comes down to is...
How many of our children do participate in these events?
Will I ask that? And all I can tell you is a number divided, I can give you Champlain, but that doesn't break out town versus village. So just, if you take soccer, for example, because that's a big usage of the playing fields in Rousas Point, 71 were Champlain, but that's the whole, and 102 were Rousas Point.
Right, so, you know, they have the convenience of being right there, too. So my concern is because now that we don't have the fields at St. Mary's and we don't have those other options, I don't know how many of our children are even participating in these events because they don't have the transportation to them. So I would, I mean, I understand them up, you know, having the fields and everything, but if we've got six kids participating in this stuff and you're looking at $10,000 a year, it doesn't equate...
They have the fields, they've been maintaining the fields, they are part of their village. I am not in favor of upping our contribution to this. I'm not, I understand the cost of maintaining this stuff, but asking us to up at $2,000, well, we don't even know how many of our own kids participate. And like Amy said, are these kids going to have transportation to get there?
That's always been the problem with the summer programs.
Right, and I...
At least with swimming, they get a bus.
Right. I mean, you know, going back to when I was a kid growing up, you jumped on your bike, you went up to the library or the American Legion, there was arts and crafts and things like that. Those, a lot of those things have gone by the wayside, I understand that as well. But I, I'm with Amy on this. I just don't feel that, that we should be bearing that big of a contribution to this.
Would it help if I got the numbers for the village?
Yeah, I would like to see the numbers, yeah.
Because I think I could ask Linda to let me have those. Well, I don't think, I'm not sure that she will, but I could go through and do them.
Well...
You have to be pretty familiar with the streets to know.
Right. And why would they not have that figure when you signed up?
She breaks it, she breaks it down, she just breaks it down into Champlain and Rousas Point.
But Rousas Point is part of Champlain.
I know, but she does out, she does town outside villages.
Right, there must not be that many within our village that participate.
I specifically asked that question today, Amy, and I didn't...
Yeah, I'm sure you did.
You did a response.
I did not get an answer.
Okay, so it's a, it's a point that we will bring back. This is, is a lot about budgeting time, much the same as the library. We'll take this back and see what, what we can come up with. I, you know, I feel that the sport is not inclined to go along with that increase. And until we have some more definitive numbers, I know it will be difficult because the town and the village just looks and says town of Champlain or whatever it is, so. But see what we can work out. But I wanted to make you aware of this discussion because it is, it's extremely, I think it's extremely important that we have these activities for the kids here.
I agree.
But if, and I think we all agree that if we're sending 30 kids or 40 kids to some of these programs...
Then that's a different story.
Yeah.
But my, and I don't mean to interrupt, but the village maintains these as part of their, from what I've always understood, as part of their...
Direction.
Yeah.
Direction.
So, I mean, they're not, they're not, they're not doing it solely for a summer project and if they don't have the funds for this, it's going to end.
Right.
I mean, these are, these are...
The YF cash flow is slowing down and they've got to find a way to stop the lead. It's trickling.
That was the response that we got.
Okay, well, I wasn't going to go there.
Well, let's be honest, I just kind of say how it is, you know. I'm not politically correct.
But, well, I'm not usually either, but I'm, I just, I'm not in favor of it at all.
We shall see what we can do. Thank you. I appreciate your, appreciate your comments. I'll put that there, things to do. Okay. Thank you. Juanita? Warren?
First of all, we need to make a transfer for, to cover the extra expense for the youth program. So we're going to transfer from A 73 10.4, which is Parks, oh, no, from, wait a minute, wait a minute. We're going to transfer to 81 73.4, 10.4, $670, which is the youth program, from A 71 10.4, which is Parks.
71 10.4?
Yeah.
Parks. Six seventy.
Make a motion to make that transfer $670.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion there? Number one call, please.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee McFetrich.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye.
Okay. Is that the warrant?
No, we have extra, we have additional invoices for the warrant. And the additional invoices are $27,929.3 for a total warrant of $114,145.99.
Well, that's, you got retirement.
It's Christmas!
You got the year to do your stuff.
I know.
You got retirement, you got perma, you got...
Well, I know.
Lots of stuff there, unfortunately. Black Brothers, and that's for black topping, black topping.
I make a...
Canal Street, right?
Yeah. Need a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the warrant with the additional invoices of $27,929.3 for a total warrant of $114,145.99.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay. Now, any discussion here? Where was this? Okay, this was under... You will notice that on the first page, on line 198, first page of the warrant, on line 198, there's also a line under the water and under the wastewater with the 50, 30, 20 split.
Yeah.
This is to pay, I think, okay, let's stay with the up and up here. This is to pay the attorneys that were dealing with this disability case. This was brought down and Tom Murnane negotiated this and recommended that, as we talked about, I think, at the last board meeting. And we have some, some things that we still need to do. We haven't received the information from the disability people, the American Disability Act, is it? ADA?
ADA.
They are sending us some materials that we all will have to review and sign off on.
I'm not guilty.
Not only the codes enforcement officer, but I'm going to ask that the village board also familiarize themselves with these laws and so that we can sign off on that as well. The other two things that we had to do was, we had to put a, we have to put a sign up on the bulletin board describing the ADA and what it stands for and what it can help and contribute to do. And the final thing is we needed to withdraw our criminal, our court complaint with this case. There are, excuse me, there are stipulations that have to be withheld, obviously ours. We have to familiarize ourselves and sign off on that. And the other party has to agree to certain things as well. Only one bird, get rid of the ducks and the chickens that are extra. And this accommodation will be one that I think we can all, at this point, live with. Tom assured me that if this continues, it will be much more expensive than what we are contributing at this point. And we will be found, and I think Amy, when this first came up, I think you said we're never going to win this one. You were absolutely correct. So that's, that is part of the warrant. And you see it on there, I know that some of you would probably like to question that and the rest of the warrant here. Look through it briefly, if there's any discussion points or anything you want to describe, now would be the time to do it. You see some big ticket items there? Retirement, perma, it's all...
Baby.
Does that go enough for itself for winter hopefully?
No. I need to have it half full. I gotta put it in when I get a chance. Let's get us to the store and get more.
All right, you notice the, the last number on the, under the general fund, on line 222, that is the repair for the snowplow.
Yes, I saw that.
And that is... That's all under that general, no, no spread out.
For the snowplow?
Yeah. But it was things that were needed. Okay, any discussion? I don't mean to hurry you, but...
Well, December's always the big one.
What's that?
December's always the big one.
Okay. We have a, we have a motion, we have a second. If there's no discussion, we'll have a roll call.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee McFetrich.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye.
Thank you. Mike, your turn.
I didn't do a meeting, I didn't do a, I worked again this month. Not much going on, don't you say? It wasn't a good one. Look at me, don't look at me.
So I heard you both say that we'll get two next month, so...
Yeah, I'll give you two.
Water tanks are full. Prospect is online. West Service Road, I just got open the valve, that one's passed. So I'm just waiting for the aqualogics, it's supposed to come up. You don't, he doesn't have the, he doesn't have the communications hooked up between the two. Prospect tank has been shut off. Probably by next week we'll be draining it. It'll be, it'll be all done. I got to do some ditching up on Prospect before I can drain it because I got some ditches that are plugged up. Softening is online, it's been at least a month or maybe more it's been online. So most of that water's moving through now. I've actually had a few people ask me if it was online because they have digital softeners and they haven't been using hardly any. Oh, really? Yeah. I have some right here on the Main Street that, of course, we, we got the Christmas lights up, the snow equipment is ready. Pure will be using it early tomorrow morning. They still have to, still got quite a bit to do as far as road stuff, water, still got meters to put in. We're not finished with the meters yet. Canal Street needs, don't need to be shouldered. But I got to get the electricians back here, we've been trying to get a hold of them. They get the heat tapes on these new tanks, they don't have any power there yet, there's no heat tapes on the risers. Other than that, we've been, we've been staying pretty busy with the water. Trying to keep it flowing through the pipes instead of, you know, through holes in the pipes.
Put some air in the ground?
Yeah, we had some... Yeah, we had some, uh, everybody should, should see the increased, well, most everybody should see the increased pressure inside the bowl wall, but
You got increased pressure?
Uh huh. Oh, yeah.
Yes?
I'll have to check first.
We do, we're not in a corner from that.
No.
Yeah, but the mains, like here, the main went from sixty to over a hundred. So, we've gained forty pounds here.
Why would she not experience increased pressure if I am? We're the same.
All toilets are having trouble flushing?
Well, we can, we can crank you up, get you probably eighty pounds or so.
Dirty pipes.
Well, could be some plug, but, just gotta, all you do is turn pressure gizr out.
Kids aren't home anymore, they're dirty.
We will be going up through Prospect too. Uh, now that the tanks have been staying online and
I was just gonna ask you that.
And hook the pumps, I've got some that need, a lot of them, the pumps need to be unhooked. If they had, you know, they cut that stuff out, pressure tanks, pumps, all that's gotta go. So.
Why are you doing that?
I don't know, at this point, whenever I can, but I don't know, we're doing, we're starting to read water meters this week. So, the building will be coming out with water meters. Um, I'll get a hold of the individuals as I, as I go in for Prospect, but we still got a lot on our plate, um best we've got a few days to come up here that we're gonna be off. We've got a perma. Perma's going back for a couple of days to give us some training. We, um have to have lockout, tagout procedures for all of our equipment and vehicles to service them. So, um, we'll be working on that here another week. But other than that, um I, I didn't even get prices yet, but I do have to, um I'm gonna have to get a new demo saw, our demo saw let them doesn't run, it's gonna be like eight hundred bucks to fix it. And you, I don't know if it's worth fixing by the time you put that money into, we still got no saw, so, I'm gonna price it on new and see what they are. Uh, we still got some, we got some trees we gotta take down. I gotta shoulder Canal Street. We still got quite a bit to do. So, I gotta find out tomorrow, I got a call today from, uh Carl Smith, he wants his water hooked up to Peterville. But we gotta dig, I gotta find out how that's gonna work, 'cause I gotta dig to disconnect his old well line, then that's so, I gotta find out tomorrow, Anthony.
A couple of trees are made in lane two?
Yeah, I gotta take those down. I've got a few that are, uh, those are all gonna be cut out down there. We had a few trees come down, there was some limbs that are hanging by, uh, by Gerald Stones, nice site did come out, cut some of the limbs out of them.
Did Satan take care of the rest of them?
No, he couldn't, it was above the power lines, they could they, I went to do it, and he couldn't do it, so they're gonna try to have nice take it down, blow the lines, and they're supposed to go back and take the rest of it down. Called me the other day, so but, it's just been, uh, we've been playing catch-up here. We still got, uh a little ways to go, so.
Mike, have you taken any pressure readings on Prospect at the top? To see what those homes are getting?
Well, we have, we got forty pounds of the tank. At the new tank, we got forty pounds, so
So, it should be
Everybody was below that, so they all in the, in the fifty, the lowest one before was Larry, and he I think before, he would, he would probably have in, uh probably fifty-five or so. I think he was around fifteen, he used to be the no pump.
And now, and now he should be, is he aware that he can pull his pump out?
Yeah, he's, I think we're gonna have hugging them all.
Okay.
Yeah. A lot of them, a lot of them new, um
Once that's completed, we have to change that building, right?
Yeah. Yeah, it's just getting there.
Not only are the pumps coming out, but now the service fee is going to apply again.
That's what I'm saying, so do we need to based on that agreement that we had, I think we just go ahead and change the building, I think it was worded, once it's corrected, it's done.
That's why I asked when he was gonna be doing this.
I would say if the next reading, probably, it won't be for this one, I don't think.
No, no.
The last three months.
It, it might be just a nice idea to send those residents up.
Just put a note on there.
Send some mail.
Yeah.
Just put it on there. Water bill this time.
This fire bill.
And then they'll, they'll apply for next one. I don't know, just whenever I can get time to get there, we're we'll get them done, I just don't know exactly when. So, that's where we're at right now.
Under all business, we have blowers on here. Uh, I wanna come back to you, Mike. I talked to Mr. Fletcher, the engineer that we have been, have employed. Uh, he was supposed, he was gonna get back to me, or was supposed to get back to me either this week or next week about how this is progressing. I will call him tomorrow to try to get this timeframe sped up a little bit, because we have a grant, a fifty thousand dollar grant that must be, this work must be completed, all this paperwork has to be completed by the twentieth of January. He assured me in my last visit with him that things were moving forward and, and he could meet that deadline, but I just wanna make sure that he gets the, uh, you know, the information, we don't wanna lose out on that money, because that's
Right, well, with the holidays coming, and you know how hard it is to get anybody to get anything out at that time.
Right. So, that being said, now would be a good time to explain to the folks about the blowers.
Well, uh, one of the blower motors actually quit today, this morning actually, he was changing it over, it wouldn't run, but I just got back, actually just before a meeting.
Yeah.
I got a we need new mag starter, and it's obsolete. Um, they say it's obsolete for that one. They possibly can get us one that'll fit, like thirteen hundred bucks plus shipping. Bobby Mannion, or Bobby Mitchell did fix me up with a temporary one, or one to use. We'll know tomorrow if it's gonna be heavy enough, we're a hundred percent sure. Those are, uh, pretty good sizes, they're forty horse motor, so, I mean, they're big, three phase. So, I'll know in the morning if it's gonna work, if not, I'm I may have another one, I may have one that I could order online, I'll have to see, but uh, I gotta figure something out, 'cause right now we only have one blower, so if that goes down, something happens to that starter, I mean, if something happened to the blower motor, I could as long as it didn't burn it up, I could probably move the starter to the other one, but if something happens, right now, we're on one blower, so Then, also, our, our gearbox is down, can't press. Uh, parts might have been in today. Gearbox more, and our auger for, um sort of play also for our, uh, often press, the waste, so hoping, hoping it might, might out tomorrow.
You did get parts?
Uh, yep, he was able to save, he had the bearing seals, um, they were, should have been in possibly today. He called me Friday night, on my way back from, we went to water class Friday. We all had water class, so, or three of us in water class. But he called and said the parts, he was waiting for the call back, he was hoping to have the parts Monday, and maybe by tomorrow, soon as he got the parts, he was gonna put it together so we can get it back here.
Okay.
So.
Um, depending on whether this motor that you have works tomorrow?
Well, it's a starter for it, but yeah.
Starter for it, whatever.
If not, I'm gonna have to, uh, I'm gonna have to get a starter, fit it, if I have to do that, um he told me, if, if I thought, I think I might have found another one the same, or close, but if not, I'd have to order one from him. Um or try to find another one, but he told me it was like thirteen hundred plus shipping, so you're probably looking at
Well, in the case that this motor tomorrow doesn't work, I would recommend that the board approve uh, to let Mike order a, a motor, whatever he finds. If it's thirteen hundred dollars, we gotta spend the thirteen hundred dollars, get the blower back online. We can't go with just one.
So, on approval up to what amount?
I'd say fifteen hundred, I mean, I don't think, it should be less than that.
Okay.
Um and if I can find another, if this doesn't work and I can find another one, then, um you know, I mean, one that's cheaper, whatever, I wouldn't go that way, I would just I'll just order it, but the one that's supposed to fit it, that he told me tonight, was gonna be like thirteen hundred bucks plus tax. Or plus shipping, rather.
Plus shipping.
So, I'm hoping this'll work, when he gave me, Eddie, old using one, one size smaller. We'll see.
I just would like to get this repaired as quickly as possible.
I mean, something like that, I, I would have to get it here, I, yeah.
No. You just unlocked the other one.
Yeah.
We won't have water spilling.
Oh, do I have a motion? Do I have a motion to have the funds available to like to?
Yes, I, I make a motion to, uh, to approve an expenditure up to fifteen hundred dollars to repair this blower at the, sort of planet.
Is that gonna be enough?
Should be, yeah.
Okay, have a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee McFetrich.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Mayor
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Murn.
Aye. Okay, uh correspondence?
Um, correspondence with Thomas Murnane to Belinda Boxer regarding coalition agreement for Casey Gregory case, full agreement available at the village office, if anyone needs to review it. And JCO monthly report.
Okay. This correspondence, we've done uh, youth commission, revenue business, whole business office renovations. Okay, uh, last week we had, um a gentleman from Atlantic Testing Laboratories here taking samples for asbestos. We got the report back today. Thirty-some pages here. But, let that, uh just leave it at to say that bulk sample request from the village office below is a list of positive materials and where they were found or located. There is some floor tiles here on the first and second floor. The mastic, which is used to put the floor tiles down, make a stick first and second floor. Black wall panel adhesive in rooms on the second floor. Yellow Egyptian wall joint compound in the second floor rooms. Black sink coating, not quite sure what that is. White penetration cock on the west exterior. That would be the exterior of this wall here. Uh, it looks, I pointed out to the guy that, we just had a lot of that pointed up recently. And he said, well, I'm not doing that, I'm looking at areas where somebody went out with a caulking gun and dabbed some caulking in the cracks. Well, that caulking helped us to contain asbestos. Okay? So the amounts went anywhere from a trace to about ten percent of the, uh, of the material, non-fibrous material. Some thirteen and a half percent. But overall with the number of tests that were taken, and I would dare say that there's probably seventy-five here, anyway. Seventy-five different samples that were taken, um and being fifty-seven samples that were taken, and being an old building, and a multiple-use building over the ages, uh, I think we expected that. I have no and was not supplied with an estimate. Uh, but this is going to have an impact on what we decide to do with renovations. I also received a proposal from Atlantic Testing Laboratories to come back and do some ground penetrating radar investigation that will help us, hopefully help us find the source of the aromas that affect this office. Uh, especially in the springtime when it rains a lot. And you walk in that door, and the fuel oil smell will just about knock you over, as you've all experienced. Uh, and the ladies have to have the window open with the fan going to alleviate some of it, I would dare say that if you stuck your head in that little bathroom there, you would smell fuel oil. Also, if down, you take a few steps down, uh, the street here, between the sidewalk and the street, and take your shovel and, and dig up a couple shovelfuls of dirt out here, you're going to get a huge gasoline smell. Huge. So I have a proposal here from ETL to come back here and do the ground ground penetrating radio, radar survey. And I would recommend that we have it done this summer report, the estimated cost of this is three thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. This will be a one-day a one-day experience. Uh the health department and DEC have both requested that they attend this if we decide to go this route. Uh I support that we do this to find out
Is this
what's in store.
I have a question though.
Mm-hmm.
Is this solely to look for old tanks?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Were, were we looking to have any ground samples done as well, determine what it is?
I think if they find the stuff, they will do the ground samples as well.
Okay.
I'm sure DEC will make them do that.
Well, yeah, DEC and the health department's here.
I don't know.
You're gonna have to fix whatever we find.
Well, we've already opened Pandora's box by by
Well, that's way back, they had monetary equipment here for how long?
Right.
And I explained that to DEC, but they still wanna look for they still wanna look for, if there's any buried tanks, they can see with the radar, tell if any voids. Is that what they're gonna do?
I don't think we're gonna find anything in the cellar. You know, it's gonna be out here in the driveway.
I agree, it needs to be done, we know that there's something, and
May not even be here, it may not even be here, I know there's some places close to here, I know there's things buried in the ground that are, you know could, maybe it's not going to go here, could go somewhere else, you don't know.
Well, the process has started, so
Exactly.
So, I need a motion to approve the expenditure of three thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars to retain Atlantic Testing Laboratories to do the ground penetrating radar investigative services.
So, second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion here? At this one, I'm sure there will be lots of discussion.
After the box is open.
Okay, if there's no discussion, we'll take a roll call, please.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee McFetrich.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. Okay, let me check real quick. Uh, park benches, I think we've talked about those a little bit, park, parket park benches with the grant. Blowers be beaten. Office renovations, it has this material survey, we talked about the asbestos as well as, uh the ground penetrating, we talked about the youth commission. Is there anything else to come before the board?
Do you have particular benches that you want me to?
I'd like to see buddy benches down there.
But the buddy benches wouldn't qualify on, for the sixteen?
No, well, you know, another idea, I think somebody brought up, is can we write a letter to businesses and say, hey, uh so-and-so, how would you like to have your name put on a buddy bench down on our park? If you'll donate the funding, we'll put your name on the bench.
Oh, sounds great.
But can we do that as a village? We can't seek donations as a village.
I mean, we tried to stay away from business names on village material.
Right, but as a whole, we can't even seek donations, that was part of that. Because we had to do the playground as a separate.
Yeah. Well let's see what the grant can give us, if not, we'll find some funding. I really think they're dangerous, I think they need to be replaced.
Maybe I don't know, that's
Playground funding, yeah.
It just wouldn't be, um buddy benches in the, with this. Right, yeah. They were, what were they like? Six hundred dollars.
We need to see if there's a deal.
Those are what it is?
I think so.
Mike, would you check the board on that one table?
But you know what?
Why not we make it a buddy bench to join a senior citizen on the bench to have a conversation?
Why not make it a little outside the box?
Oh, that's a great idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have them now and then.
You have lots of them, I like that idea.
Let me bring those cement table tables down there and put them in place.
Yeah, let's do that.
Yeah.
Put those down.
Take those others, those, uh, take those benches right out of there.
Has anything happened with the police coming back from the damage to the park?
No.
No.
Not yet.
Just haven't followed up on it, there's been so much other stuff going on.
But I think the message has to be sent.
Oh, God, the damage down there. Also, in the pavilion, one of the electric, um, face plates has been tilted, I noticed that when I was hiding candy canes. So I tilted it back up, but the screw is gone.
Okay.
Which isn't safe.
It used to only have outlet covers, but I took them all off, they shut the powers and they can't charge, 'cause everybody just breaks them off, so, we took it away, but I left the other one on, but maybe I'm gonna have to shut that one off too, the one on the main.
Well, what about having charging stations, you know, with the kids?
I don't, I mean, we had outlets all the way around, they broke all the outlets off.
They break the, um...
Covers, waterproof cover, you know?
Waterproof cover?
Yeah, yeah, it's not come off everyone, so I put blank covers and covered them all. Pushed out the power off for the outlets and I put blank covers on them, so, can't use them.
We just need to pursue.
I just don't wanna appreciate.
Yeah. All the damage to picnic tables is just disgusting, it's very frustrating. Very frustrating.
I think those are the only two left.
All right, so is there no further business to come before the board, to take a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Have a second? All in favor?